I'd like to call this March 19 meeting of Greenville County Council of Order. And I'd like to ask Councilor Blunt to alter my patience, please.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for another beautiful day in Greenville County. Again, be with us as we conduct business. Thank you for the people that came out to the meeting. Pray that you give them safe travels home as well and just continue to be with us in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda are the approval of minutes from the March 5 meeting.
Move approval of minutes.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from the March 5 meeting say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item are proclamations and special recognition. I'd like to recognize Councilor Blunt to introduce the Greenville Literacy Association.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm honored today to acknowledge the Greenville Literacy Association, or GLA, because I'm going to use the letters as I read through it pass now. For 59 years, GLA has passionately pursued its mission of enriching our community by enhancing literacy and employability among Greenville County citizens. Their vision of a harmonious community where education transcends barriers of culture and circumstance resonates deeply. With values centered on education, enrichment, and empowerment, GLA has been a beacon of hope for over 67,000 undereducated adults in Greenville County, offering vital services ranging from GED preparation to English language proficiency courses. Through partnerships with organizations like United Way of Greenville County and Greenville Technical College, GLA has served 600 to 700 students annually, facilitating tangible outcomes such as 30 to 40 GEDs achieved and over 5,000 volunteer hours contributed to their programs. We commend GLA for their unwavering dedication and transformative impact on our community, recognizing that their work embodies a spirit of collaboration and service that defines all of Greenville County. So if you wouldn't mind to stand so county council as well as the public could thank you for your service.
Welcome to county council. Next item on the agenda are appearances on current agenda items. We've got, I believe, three speakers tonight. Ms. McCaskill, if you'll call the first speaker.
I mean, your first speaker is Diane Freeland. Her topic is Items 13B I and 13B II.
Welcome, Ms. Freeland. If you'll give us your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Good evening. Diane Freeland, 413 Heatherfoles Lane in Simpsonville. I would like to note that I fully understand the need to address the disastrous conditions of our roads and the urgent need to fix them. My first concern is the timeframe for the commission to discern which projects are to be funded. This seems to be a monumental undertaking that must be completed in a mere 54 days. Secondly, you're asking the citizens of Greenville County to consider passing a capital projects penny tax referendum next November, which can last up to eight years. And I believe we went for eight years now for that. Okay? We can agree that something must be done. As I am sure you are aware, there are many constituents in our community that have taken issue with the county budget for roads as there are claims of discrepancies in the budget line items, as well as questions as to where certain dollars were actually spent. Until these questions are addressed and answered, I feel you may have a challenging time getting the public to agree to allocating more money to fix our roads when many residents do not trust the council's handling of our current budgeted dollars for roadways. I have a suggestion. The council may want to consider having an outside forensic audit of the current council budget to clarify, to satisfy, and to answer these concerns. I believe that ordering and executing a forensic audit of all roadway funds would go a long way in bolstering public support for the referendum. In conclusion, let me leave you with one thought. People who have nothing to hide, hide nothing. I would like to hand a copy of my statement to the clerk so it's part of the public record, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Freeland. Next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, your next speaker is Sally Wills. Her topic is food desert policy.
My name is Sally Wills. I live at 213 Fremont Drive in Simpsonville, South Carolina. I wanted to speak today, Chief Counsel, just to share a little bit on behalf of my organization that I lead, Livewell Greenville. Livewell Greenville is a coalition that works on equitable access to healthy foods and physical activity opportunities throughout Greenville County. I want to take a moment just to thank council for shedding a light on this important issue and looking at food insecurity through the food desert policy that is proposed today. Greenville County has experienced food insecurity. More than 23% of our county experiences food insecurity on any given day within our community. And we know that this is an important issue that needs more attention. We want to applaud Dr. Fant and council for introducing this topic and shining a light on it. This is not the first time that Livewell Greenville has worked with Greenville County in addressing food insecurity. One of the more significant times that we've worked together was during the county cares response, as we looked at ways that we could invest in infrastructure to support food security throughout the county. I do have a handout that I'd like to share with council that just demonstrates how those dollars were used back in 2020 and 2021, and just encourage you to continue to keep an eye on this important topic. I also want to offer the support of Livewell Greenville and our many partners as you look at many significant ways to address food insecurity in our county. We know that Greenville County has successfully used multi-county business park and other incentives to increase affordable housing. Many of these same tactics can be used to address food insecurity. As we all know, as we approach dinnertime, food is a critical part of our living here on this earth. No human is really exempt from that and should not have any kind of barrier in the way of making sure that we get the nutrition that we need to live a full and active life. I thank council for this important view on this topic and ask that if you need any support, Livewell Greenville is here to help you support and address different ways that you can continue to address food security for all of Greenville County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, your last speaker is Jack Logan. His topic is the food desert policy.
Mr. Logan, come give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Jack Logan, 5051 Old Augusta Road, Greenville, South Carolina. I'm a very conservative activist. And when I hear, it's a good thing, and I thank Dr. Fant for about the food desert. But at the same time, when I look at grocery stores, we talk about healthy eating, at some point, as Greenville grow, people have to learn to work and to make their living and drive to grocery stores. I'm a runner. I live in Dr. Fant's district. I drive to Mr. Curvin's district. I drive on the east side to more, where I can purchase more healthier foods than going to Dollar General, Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, and some of those stores. And even some of the Hispanic stores that's in District 25, one just opened up where the Bank of America, they have healthy foods, because I go there myself. I don't want to see money wasted. I appreciate what the lady just said. But at the same time, we have, people have got to take precautions and do stuff on their own, like my parents raised me. And that's the way it should be done. We can't start building grocery stores. I understand in Mr. Blunt's district, he does, he do, there should be more stores built there, and probably in Mr. Russo's district. But the rest, in our district, we have Ingus, we have a Food Lion, we have a Aldi, those are healthy grocery stores. Something can't be in Jack Logan's backyard. That's, it's just that simple. I believe in not wasting money. We're wasting too much money. And look at feeling sorry for people, you know? And it's not the county council's job to take care of Jack Logan or no other individual person. There's a thing called work, and there's enough jobs in Greenville County for every citizen to work. But again, I recall when activist Bruce Wilson stood before this council and brought this up before, and there was nothing done. I just hope that this is something done for, been talked about for the right reason, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. All right. Next item on the agenda are public hearings, and I'd like to call on Chairman Curvin for Item 7A, Intersys Advanced Systems, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Energous Advanced Systems Incorporated with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone signed up to speak in favor or in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curvin, we have one speaking in favor. That would be Kevin Landmesser.
Thank you. Please come forward, Mr. Landmesser. Give us your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, good evening. I'm Kevin Landmesser. I reside at 109 Chestnut Circle in Simpsonville, District 28. I'm here this evening not only as a private resident, but as the interim president and CEO of the Greenville Area Development Corporation. Intersys is an energy storage systems and solutions company. It has announced plans to invest over $500 million and create 500 new jobs over the next five years. They're a very old established company, a trusted manufacturer of batteries, chargers, power systems for a variety of uses that include telecommunications, broadband, data centers, industrial utilities, warehouse, logistics, aerospace, defense, and transportation. And they're more recently reaching into electric vehicles. This new operation, there are a few key things that are, I feel like I should point out to y'all. In addition to it being just manufacturing, it's also research and development. It is very competitive with other states. Huntsville, Alabama, in particular, is one of the finalists. Key things about this, why it's so important to Greenville, it further diversifies our industrial base, and it is a new strategic focus for not only the federal government, but for the governor and his South Carolina Department of Commerce. So we, it's definitely one that we want to grow. As a reminder, the manufacturer's tax burden in South Carolina is much higher than that of a resident. And with the manufacturer, the cost is much lower than it is for a resident. So let me just give you a quick example that I think elaborates this point. In economic development terms, a $10 million industrial project is relatively small. A building at Fox Hill that was 250,000 square feet, just the building itself was 20 million. But in this case, the $10 million manufacturing project, even with the FLO agreement assessed at 6%, would generate the amount of taxes that would have to be met by 50 residential homes at $300,000 at a 4% assessment. So again, think about that, one $10 million manufacturing project, the amount of taxes we would get would have to be generated by 50 residential homes valued at 300,000. This really truly is a very important project for Greenville County for a lot of different reasons, just a few that I pointed out. I hope that y'all will support this project this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Ms. McCaskill, is there any other speakers on this topic?
Can we ask questions, Mr. Chairman?
No, sir.
No.
No.
No, sir, not for this topic.
Okay, thank you. Then I declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Next item, Chairman Curvin, Item 7B, Lawrence Greenville County Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment.
Yes, sir. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the amendment to that certain agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park binding between Lawrence County, South Carolina, and Greenville County, South Carolina, dated January 31, 2000, to enlarge the park and to add certain property located in Lawrence County, known as Hunter Industrial A Building Owner LLC. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curvin, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Thank you. I declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Next item, 7C, Chairman Curvin, NCNE LLC and Watt Holdings LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a special source credit agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, Watt Holding LLC, and NCNE LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will receive certain special source credits in respect to investment in related infrastructure and other matters related thereto. Ms. McCaskill, has anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curvin, we have one speaking in favor. That would be Kevin Landmesser.
Thank you. Come back, come back to see us, Mr. Landmesser.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'll be brief. Don't need to state my address for the record again. 209 Chestnut Circle, Simpsonville. NCNE is a commercial electrical contracting company that was started in Greenville in It's family-held. It's grown from not being just a Greenville company, but from serving four states. Definitely a type of company that we want. They serve, are a key contractor to a lot of our manufacturers here in the area. Greenville is in competition for this project that represents about 3.7 million and about 10 new jobs, paying about 24 bucks an hour with competition with Dakota, Georgia. Companies like this, and why they're so important, is that residential growth has really taken a lot of our larger industrial land tracts. Our future is going to be a lot more of us working to get smaller companies like this. With the county incentive proposal, one thing that's very important in this is, hopefully you noticed, that it does not involve a fee in lieu of tax that runs over 30 years. It's strictly a special source revenue credit that's only over five years. The value of that each year is approximately about $20,000. The total value over the 10 years is about $100,000. My point in pointing this out is, is that the GADC always asks or acts in a fiscally conservative manner in its use of incentives. We're going up against counties, our neighbors, like Anderson, that are very aggressive, as is rural counties like the Dakota area, to the point of almost being irresponsible. So another point, thing to point out is, like consumers, like we all are, companies are being very discerning in looking for savings. So we definitely want to support our homegrown companies, and we are very conservative in doing this. I would ask also that you support this project. It's important to Greenville's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone else signed up to speak?
Mr. Chairman, did he, did he tell how many jobs that they were creating and what was the investment?
Yes, sir.
Can you say that again? Can we?
And this is one of- Public hearing, we're not doing back and forth on question. Sorry. Public hearing, we're not allowed to ask a question.
Right. It'll remind council members everything's in the packet.
It's in the package, but could he not just say that, Mr. Curvin?
Is that possible?
The hearing is closed if there are no more speakers. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 7D, Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance Amendment. Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend the floodways section of the flood damage prevention ordinance codified at Section 37 of Chapter 8, Article 2 of the Code of Ordnances of Greenville County, South Carolina. Has anybody signed up to speak in favor or in opposition?
Chairman Seaman, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Thank you. Having no speakers, I'll declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Seaman. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item are resolutions. Chairman Curvin, 9A, South Carolina Office of Resilience Mitigation Department grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption a resolution authorizing the county administrator and chairman of county council to execute an American Rescue Plan Act Stormwater Infrastructure Program Subsequent Agreement between Greenville County and the South Carolina Office of Resilience to fund stormwater infrastructure improvement projects that will mitigate the impact of future disasters.
All right. You've heard the motion. All in favor of adoption of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is 9B, 260 Wilson Bridge LP Assignment and Assumption Agreement. Chairman Curvin.
Yes, sir. I move for adoption to, to resolution approving, excuse me, I move for adoption to a resolution approving consenting to the ratifying the assignment and assumption by Exter 360 Wilson Bridge LP of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, AE Magnolia LP, and AE WW LLC. I believe this is a simple substitution of some ownership entities in the project.
Okay. All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda are ordinances at third reading. 10A is Intersys Advanced Systems, Inc. Chairman Curvin.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption at third reading an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Intersys Advanced Systems Incorporated with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of capital special source credits and other matters related thereto.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Roll call's been requested. All right.
Mr. Chairman, are we still having issues with the screening to show the roll call votes up on the boards?
I'm not aware that we are.
But it doesn't show them.
Okay. I'm not familiar with the system. The old-fashioned way, we would call the roll and the clerk would announce the results. Do you not trust the results that she called?
No, I'm saying, the old-fashioned way was we would vote and we would say it verbally, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And the new way is, and I talked to her earlier, and she said it was a glitch in the system inside a cow.
Okay.
There's a glitch inside a cow, but I'm just asking, do we still have, do we have a glitch in here? That's the question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, it's not presenting-
Okay. If we do another roll call, we'll do the old-fashioned way. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 10B, Lawrence Greenville Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment. Chairman Curvin.
Thank you, sir. Third reading, an ordinance, excuse me, I've got a wrong page there. I move to adopt, excuse me, a third reading, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the certain agreement of the development of a joint county industrial and business park and binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Lawrence County, South Carolina, dated January 31, 2000, to enlarge the park and to add certain property located in Lawrence County, Hunter Industrial A Building Owner LLC.
Okay. Question is adoption of the ordinance at third reading. All those in favor say aye.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman.
You have a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is this, Mr. Curvin, is this the kind where we get money from Lawrence County?
Yes.
Yes, correct. Thank you for that, clerk.
It's the projects located in Lawrence County, and by law, we get 1% of the proceeds.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is 10C. Chairman Curvin.
Yes, sir. I move for adoption at third reading an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a special source credit agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, Watt Holdings LLC, and NCNE LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will receive certain special source credits in respect to investment in related infrastructure and other matters related thereto.
Okay. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda are ordinances at second reading. I'll call on Dr. Fant for those zoning ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CZ 2024-010, property located on Park West Boulevard, Greenville, requesting rezoning from S1 to RMA. The planning commission and the committee recommended denial. On behalf of the committee, I move for denial of the ordinance at second reading.
All right. Any questions on this zoning ordinance? All those in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. This CZ 2024-010 is denied. Dr. Fant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CZ 2024-012, this item has recently been withdrawn by the applicant.
Okay. Next item.
CZ 2024-013, property located on Grove Reserve Parkway and Old Grove Road, Piedmont, requesting rezoning from C1 to C2. The planning commission and the committee both recommended approval. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of the ordinance at second reading.
All right. You've heard the motion. Any questions? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CZ 2024-014, this item was withdrawn by the applicant.
Okay. Next item, 82.
CZ 2023-082, property located at 1679 Gear Highway and Keeler Mill Road, Traveler's Rest, requesting rezoning from RS to RM12. The planning commission recommended denial, and the committee recommended approval as amended to OD. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I would move to amend the request to OD.
Okay. Any questions on the amendment? All those in favor of amending CZ 2023-82 to OD instead of RM12-
Correct.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Now, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the ordinance as amended.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is 11B, Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance Amendment. Ms. Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval at second reading an ordinance to amend the floodways section of the flood damage prevention ordinance codified at Section 37 of Chapter 8, Article 2 of the Code of Ordnances of Greenville County, South Carolina.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at the second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda are ordinances at first reading. I'll call on Dr. Fant for several items.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I present for first reading zoning dockets CZ 2024-016 and CZ 2024-018 through CZ 2024-020.
Okay. We'll send those to the Planning and Development Committee. Next item are committee reports, and the first one out is a report from the Finance Committee. Chairman Curvin.
Thank you, sir. On behalf of the committee, I move to approve an interim government agreement relating to joint multi-county industrial and business park property between Greenville County and the city of Greenville.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, next report on the agenda is committee, the whole. Vice Chairman Seaman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to appoint Thomas Epting, Ray Latimore, and Lisa Stevens to fill the three county-appointed seats on the- to fill the three county-appointed seats on the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission.
All in favor.
Call, please.
Okay, roll call is requested. If it's still not working, we'll go old-fashioned way.
Our IT guy has rebooted it, so if you want to try.
Okay, let's try it.
What item is it? 13B.
Okay, there's the tabulation. Thank you very much. The committee report is adopted. The next item, the next report, Ms. Vice Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to adopt a resolution recommending actions to the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission in support of roads, bridges, and related infrastructure projects on the ballot.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Roll call, please.
Roll call's been requested. All right, thank you. The report is adopted. Next item on the agenda is the administrative report.
I have no reports, Susan.
Can I ask the administrator one question?
Sure.
It came up earlier tonight. Mr. Cornell, does the county have an outside independent audit done every year?
Yes, we do, by a certified public accounting agency. We change it up every couple of years to a different one. Every year, we get an annual audit done.
And this is an outside audit firm, CPA certified and all that?
Absolutely. It's published, and we publish it every year. You can go online and see them for probably the last 10, 15, 20 years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Administrator.
Another question, please.
Just a minute. I have a follow-up question. What's the difference between an outside independent audit and a forensic audit?
An outside independent audit, they're basically the same. The difference with a forensic audit would be if you're, for instance, if you're involved in a lawsuit, or you're going to court, they would basically do probably additional documentation because they'd have to testify in court. It's the same, they're checking the same numbers at the end of the day. So there's not, from a technical standpoint, there's not a big difference between a forensic audit and just your regular audit, which we have done every single year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, Mr. Administrator, the, do we have a way in our audit to tell if money is being spent for a particular purpose that it's budgeted for, as opposed to like total money coming in and total money going out? I mean, I don't think there's any, I don't hear any allegations about, you know, money going, being taken, but, but, you know, are the, are we able to track if we budget it for a certain thing, that, you know, we can show the money went to that?
You can look at the, well, you can read the budget report, you can read the audit, it'll show what was budgeted and what was spent. If it's spent on something different, I guess if it was, they test all expenditures, where they run very thorough samples of all the expenditures. Make sure we comply with a lot of different things. If it's a grant, with the grant, we have a Single Audit Act, audit every year also, that's for all our grants. You know, we're required to have these audits because of state law, because of our bonds outstanding, because of our grant laws. So, to even suggest that we don't have an audit is just, is just totally ludicrous. We have audits every single year. And it, now, Steve, will it, will it actually show, for instance, if we, if we had something budgeted for office supplies and it was spent for maybe a typewriter, or not typewriter, a computer, something of that nature?
Knowing your age.
Yeah. Then, then of course, it may, it may not show up, because it was office equipment versus office supplies. Something like that may not be called out. But if it's something that was a large item, and it was used for something totally different, there'd be a note about it, absolutely.
Ms. Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cornell, could you also, we've had a couple of questions, and I think comments related to a budget amount for roads not matching what was spent, or vice versa, could you just give us some insight into why some of those numbers might be different?
Well, there's, there's a variety of reasons. Timing could be one thing. When the actual work was done, may run into a second fiscal year, so it would show up in that fiscal year. For instance, this past year, I think we received around $8 million in road maintenance fees. We spent over $12 million in paving. So, right there, you can say, well, you know, you spent a lot more than you brought in, which is true, we did, but it's accumulative. So, the year before, it might have been a little bit reversed because of timing of those things. Keep in mind, too, the road maintenance fee a couple of years ago was thrown out by the Supreme Court. Well, in our budget, we had the full $25. We quit collecting 10 of it. So, of course, we had to cut back on our expenditures, because we only collected about $8 million that year. So there's going to be, the budget said we're going to spend 12 million, but we weren't collecting 12 million. So, of course, we had to cut back. So there's a lot of different reasons that way, that it's a timing issue generally. This past year, paving season, we went out for bid, we got zero bids, because of all the work that's being done on the major highways and whatnot around here. So we had to go back out and basically extend the time for which we would allow the contractor to complete the work. So instead of saying it has to be done in a year, we gave them 18 months. So our fiscal year is 12 months, so obviously, it could bleed into the next fiscal year. So, all those kind of things come into play. But our road paving has, over the years, we've basically done a little over, between 12 and 14 million a year, depending on the year, in paving.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Administrator. Requests and motions by council members. Chairman Fant, you've got a Item 15A on food desert policy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, as noticed on the county council agenda, I am introducing tonight a resolution to create a county policy regarding the establishment of grocery stores in underserved areas of Greenville County. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking that this resolution be referred to the appropriate committee.
All right, I'll send that to Finance Committee. Thank you, Dr. Fant.
Thank you, sir.
There being no further business, I'll entertain one final motion.
Regent.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and we are adjourned.